Ah, looks like we're good. All right. We're calling this meeting to order. This is our city council, uh, regular meeting. We're in Mon County Commission Chambers in two forty-three High Street. Uh, it's Tuesday, April second, twenty twenty-four, and it's a little bit after seven P M. We're calling the meeting to order and asking the clerk if she would please call the rule.
Yes, Deputy Ma- Deputy Mayor Abu Ghanim.
President.
Bill Kueckie.
Here.
Wheezy Michael.
Here.
Danielle Trumbull, here. Dave Harshbarger.
Here.
Brian Butcher.
Here.
Mayor Celine.
Here.
I'll stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, we have three sets of minutes, the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, a regular meeting minutes, the March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, special meeting minutes, uh, special meeting one minutes, the March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four committee of the whole meeting minutes. Um, we would normally, uh, prove them through acclamation if there's, everybody's good?
Just a typo on, um, the Ci- City of Westover's, uh, attorney, his name is Stranko, it was listed as Senko.
No.
So just a T R. to add to the name, please. That was in my report.
Great, thank you. Thank you for noticing that. Otherwise, we're good?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Correspondence, so we are gonna start with Autumn Williams. And, um, sexual assault awareness month, hi.
So, whereas sexual assault awareness month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of Monongaheli County, and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community as seen by statistics indicating that one of five women will have experienced sexual assault by the time they complete college, Fisher, Cullen, and Turner, um, two hundred, and whereas we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors, and whereas staff and volunteers of West Virginia Sexual Assault Programs and other professionals have come together as a West Virginia Foundation for Rape Information Services, um, uh, W E F R I S to support each other in their work and provide the state of West Virginia and its citizens with a central source of information on sexual assault, and whereas with leadership, education, and encouragement, there's compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in Monongaheli County through prevention, education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. And whereas the Rape and Domestic Violence Information Center, R D B I C, strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, and how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Jenny Celine, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of the city council, join anti-sexual violence advocates and support service programs in the belief that all community members must be part of the solution to end sexual violence. Along with the United States government and the state of West Virginia, the council does hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-four as sexual assault awareness. In Monongaheli County, and applauds the efforts of many victim services providers, service providers, police officers, prosecutors, national and community organizations, and private sector supporters, or their efforts in promoting awareness about sexual assault. And I just wanted to mention that back in the day, I used to work, um, victim and witness assistance at the county courthouse, so I worked with R D B I C almost every day.
Okay.
So, anyway, I appreciate your work and, uh, would like to hand this to you.
Thank you very much.
And congratulate you.
Thank you. Just, just thank you, everybody, for your support. That's, it's much appreciated, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, who's coming next? Vicki Ashcroft. Somebody for Fair Housing Month proclamation. Well, I can just, I'll read it, and then I'll bring it to you. Yeah, I'll, I'll come, I'll come bring it to you in a minute, okay. Whereas under the federal fair housing law, title, um, eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, no American should have the right uh, to purchase or rent shelter, or purchase or rent shelter of choice, a bridge, because of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, national origin, sexual orientation, or gender identity. And whereas under the West Virginia State Fair Housing Law, Title forty-nine-two-three-hundred-and-five M C A, it is illegal to deny housing to any person because of race, sex, religion, color, age, physical or mental disability, or national origin, and whereas it is the fundamental policy of this nation, our state and our city, to advance, safeguard, and defend the principles and guarantees of equality of opportunity for all, and whereas the places where people live have a direct impact on the quality of their health, education, and access to economic opportunities. And whereas discriminatory housing practices create racial and economic segregation in communities that can lead to desperate outcomes and overall quality of life, and whereas the City of Morgantown believes that understanding of and access to fair housing laws have made our community and our neighborhoods stronger and more vibrant. Whereas we are committed to programs that will help educate the public about the right to fair housing practices in the City of Morgantown, whereas we are committed to promoting housing choices and fostering inclusive communities free from housing discrimination. Now, therefore, I, Jenny Celine, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, uh, West Virginia, on behalf of city council, want to thank the many people and organizations in our community who have opened the doors of housing opportunity to all citizens and proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-four to be Fair Housing Month. And I'm wondering whether Vicki Ashcroft happens to be in the room. Um, and I will come and present this.
You may want to explain who you're presenting to, that she's a, a, a committee member. Never mind, go ahead.
Oh, yes. Yes. Do you want to tell a little bit about your organization? I'm bringing in. Oh, I can't bring your microphone. It's attached.
See?
It's just on the. All right. Come say.
Say if you were.
Two minutes, and then we'll.
I got four, just four. Um, it is April's Fair Housing Month. It's also Sexual Assault Awareness Month. It's a lot of months. Uh, for fair housing, the state always puts together a fair housing fair. This year's being held in Morgantown on April eighteenth, I believe, could be twentieth, not certain. It will be on our website, which is H R C at Morgantown W V E dot gov. No, that's our email address, but yeah, go to the city webpage and Human Rights Commission, and we shall have all the information up there. And also, we have finally gotten control of our Facebook page and put it there, hopefully. The brain still works.
Yes, so, perfect.
You may want to introduce yourself.
She did.
Did you? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Uh, this, there's, uh, sorry, proclamation was not put forth by the Human Rights Commission. I'm accepting it on their behalf.
Yes.
Just wanted, just wanted to give you a little heads up and a little promotion for the Human Rights Commission.
To which people need to apply to be members?
There you go.
As long as they're residents of City Morgantown? That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for, thank you for making that pitch. Now, we have the Riverfront Task Force presentation, uh, Steve Celine.
Hi.
Good evening. Good evening, y'all. Lot of familiar faces up there. Um, I'm the other Celine here. Um, I'm representing, tonight, I'm representing the interests of the Morgantown Riverfront, um, Revitalization Task Force, which is a, a bit of a mouthful, but we're a, we're a voluntary group that was commissioned by the city uh, to promote the enhancement, the enhancement of the riverfront. And, um, I put two handouts in your packets, um, so that's got most of what I just want to try to hit the highlights of those, of those handouts, um, tonight, and then maybe close with a, with a recommendation, um, for, for the city. Also wanted to, uh, I came into this, I think, what, at the end of summer, um, Jessica wanted to acknowledge Jessica McDonald, um, right, Jessica McDonald's work, uh, chairing this committee in the past, and so I came into this, uh, late summer, so about a half a year into this, and, uh, this is the first time I've, I've reported out to council. So, I think the format in the past was, uh, maybe to focus on accomplishments of the, of the task force over the last twelve months. I, um, I'm gonna focus a little bit more on the future of the riverfront. That's, that's my, my goal here today. But, um, uh, so, if you could follow along, let's see if this, yeah, if you could follow along with it, we'll start with this opportunity analysis. Uh, we crafted this, uh, late December twenty-three as the city was going into its budget period. So, we, we tried to, um, you know, highlight some, some short-term, on the first page, short-term and long-term projects that we felt would move the riverfront, uh, zone forward. But we started with just a few policy concepts, just because we feel like this is really what we need to be thinking about going forward. So, thinking about the riverfront as a, as a holistic corridor, uh, and, uh, work toward planning and management and marketing of a one riverfront corridor. Uh, that, that's really, um, what we think is important going forward. So, um, some short-term and long-term projects, I, hopefully, you've, you've looked that over before the meeting. I wanted to focus, uh, on the second page here, the work, more work plan and budget items, uh, going forward. I'm gonna circle back to this a couple times, uh, in my presentation, but the main takeaway, the main recommendation uh, we want to make, uh, to council is to support a, a riverfront master planning process um, for the whole riverfront, for the one riverfront, um, area between the M U B, um, facility on one end and the M U B water treatment, the water treatment plant on one end, and the sewage treatment plant on the other end, that whole corridor that includes the arboretum, uh, there. Um, so, some key, that's really the main takeaway we wanted to make, but we had a couple other, what we felt like were strategic projects going forward, uh, such as the trail lighting, which we're moving forward on, um, and, uh, building some mountain bike pump tracks, uh, near the Heritage Park there, next to the rail trail. So, uh, just wanted to focus on those, those work plan items, uh, there. But, um, Kristin, you have to help me, uh, did I minimize this? Oh, there we go. How about that? Okay, so I really want to move on to the, to the, to the other handout, because this, this is hot off the press. Um, we just reported this out to our, um, our Riverfront Task Force meets once a month. We usually meet on the fourth, uh, Thursday in the morning. Um, and, um, and we just reported out to the task force last Thursday. Um, so this is our opportunity to, to get this out to a, a broader audience, uh, get it out to the press as well. Um, and so, uh, what we did, this started, um, this started last, last fall. We did a walkabout of the riverfront. We did a, a walking assessment. We had maybe a dozen people, uh, that came out and did a walking assessment. We had a forum to go along with it, and we got done, and we thought, well, we should expand this out to a broader set of riverfront stakeholders. So, so we did, um, and, uh, let's see, we had, uh, who's the G I S guy?
Marvin.
Marvin, Marvin was help, helped me to put that, put that survey into a ARC G I S. It had five open-ended questions. We wanted to get communities', uh, ideas on the strengths of the riverfront, uh, challenges, uh, particularly the vision that people have for our, our riverfront, and then some of the next steps, some of the short-term actions that, that we need going forward. So, um, we sent that out, uh, to a broad set of, uh, riverfront stakeholders. Um, we ended up with a hundred and nineteen usable responses, um, from that online survey. And then basically, what I did is to, um, organize those into meaningful categories, um, and, uh, and, and this is what we ended up with here. So, I'll just, I just want to hit the highlights here, but we'll start with strengths. That's a good place to start, but people, uh, you know, fifty-two, over, over half of, uh, the respondents felt like the rail trail, um, was a huge strength and the, and the amphitheater, and the summer concert, those three things just blasted out of the, the data there. So, those were huge strengths, but you can see, um, many of the other, uh, many of the other strengths. I was really interested that, um, people felt, were really happy with the progress made on the riverfront. You know, it wasn't all negative. People were generally pleased with progress made, but then they also saw a lot of opportunity to do more. Um, so I, I thought that was really, really neat. Um, and then what I did is I, I summarized the, the data. So what we have here is the, the number of mentions, and then the percent of the total, right? The percent of a hundred and nineteen total respondents. And then I just tried to pick out what I felt like were some of the most interesting quotes, direct quotes that applied to those, those priorities. And I was just struck by the, by how serious everybody took, took this exercise. You know, they really care a lot about the riverfront and want to be involved in the, in the future of the riverfront. So, I just thought they were real quotable, uh, things here about, about the strengths of, of the riverfront. So, uh, let you, let you enjoy those quotes there, but, okay, then we're gonna move on to challenges. You know, along, along with strengths, there's always challenges, and, uh, you know, obviously, I, this is probably not a surprise that the, the unhoused issue and, and trash and, and all down along the riverfront were top of the mind for a lot of people. Sixty-one percent of people mentioned the unhoused issue as something that, that, that was a challenge to overcome, and I know we're all working towards solutions to that, but that is, that is a big, a big deal. Uh, a lot of people want to see a more holistic approach to riverfront planning. Uh, a lot of people saw underdeveloped property in different locations. Uh, we need more property control. That's the flip side of that. But, um, you know, those were the, those were the challenges, and some telling, some telling quotes about each of those. So, strengths, challenges, um, vision, I love this. This, to me, is the most useful section of the survey, people's vision for the riverfront. It was amazing, just so many good things, but the things that really popped out of the, the results were, um, you know, people talking about improving walking connections to downtown and to the neighborhoods. The riverfront is close to those, but, but it's a challenge to, to get back and forth. And then this is another one I really wanted to highlight, is river interaction and connections. People really want to have a more intimate connection to the river. They, they want to be closer to the river. So, think, uh, think a boardwalk along the river where people could be right down close to the water. People want, want that. And so, you know, as we think about future projects, let's think about how we can get people down so they can dangle their feet in the water, so that they can be encouraged to fish on, on a dock, um, ways that we can get people right down close to the water. I love this guy's quote here. Check, check this first quote out. I'll see, that's, he wants an immersive waterfront and, um, a third space where people can gather and share emotion and connection. That, that wasn't the one I really wanted. I wanted the one about the, I'll go back up here and just grab that one, the river. Where's my river quote? Uh, there it is. Somebody had been to the San Antonio, uh, riverfront. They said, hey, they have a narrow concrete line, bitch. We have a real river, right? We have a real river flowing through Morgantown, West Virginia. Let's celebrate it. Let's get people right down there to really enjoy and interact with the river. And, you know, the Corps of Engineers has made it pretty much a lake, right? It's pretty safe. A lot of, you know, sometimes at flood stage, right now, there's a lot of water flowing through there, but most of the time, it's a, it's a nice pond out there. You know, beginners can go out there and paddleboard. So, anyway, challenges, long-term vision. Um, what I did is I broke it, I, I should have mentioned this. I broke vision into two different ones. The first one, table, the first chart is the character of the river, which is sort of what they wanted to feel like, right? What they wanted to feel, they wanted to feel clean. They wanted to feel safe. Uh, they want more community-based activities, right? They want opportunities for local bands to, to do pop-up activities along the riverfront. Um, so, so that, that was the character, and then the second table is more the type of experiences that they want to see down along the riverfront, and, uh, they, they want more river recreation. They want more live entertainment, uh, more shops, small business, dining, uh, lots of really good, uh, specific ideas. And in the report, you'll see, I, I tried to collect some of the really good ideas that people had. I think I have it in my, in my, uh, conclusions here, but so many creative ideas for, for projects, for development projects. Just fantastic. And then short-term actions, uh, short-term acts, you know, solving unhoused issue, of course, way up there, clean up the trash, stronger leadership. You know, a lot of people talked about wanting more focus, more leadership, more planning, um, along the riverfront. They want a, more police presence, you know, right down the line there, in terms of short-term actions. Increase, increase programming and events along the, the waterfront. So, so then in the last, uh, last page, I just tried to summarize what I felt like were the biggest takeaways, some of the conclusions. People want to interact more closely with the river. Uh, they, they want to, they want us to address the unhoused issue there. They want to feel safe and experience a clean waterfront. They want to activate underutilized and, and dilapidated space and buildings along the riverfront. They want more community-based events. And here's the list of all the creative projects, you know, boardwalks along the, the water, fishing trail. Somebody said they want to sink a barge. They want to sink a barge and put shops and bars, you know, along the bar, so they can be right down along, along the water there. Um, they want a P R T. station down at the waterfront place, mountain bike features along the rail trail, a whitewater park, um, a zip line, how about that? A zip line from up above down across. What do you think, Vincent? Wouldn't that be cool? Think, think zip line, maybe. Let's go. Absolutely. Uh, Jenny and I got that from Quebec City. They've got a toboggan slide in front, on the hill in front of Quebec City. You can, you can take a toboggan right down and dig it along the riverfront. Pretty cool winter event, so, be creative. They want the waterfront to be a gathering or hangout place, a proud focal point for the City of Morgantown. They're generally happy with the progress made, but they see a lot of opportunities. And then here's my main takeaway tonight, is, uh, just to see a more holistic and strategic approach taken to enhance the riverfront. See more focused planning, staffing, organization, marketing, and cooperation brought to bear on, on this one, uh, riverfront area. So, takeaway quote, the Morgantown Riverfront, think of it like a chill place with nature, eco-friendly tech, and cool community spaces. The goal is to make the Morgantown Riverfront awesome for everyone for the next ten years. So, so there it is, and then, uh, I, Kristin and I, I added, it didn't go into your packet, but we can get you. I, I added some survey implications, just because I really wanted to hammer the developing a riverfront master plan. That's really the one main takeaway, is that we really think that the City of Morgantown, with partners, you know, a master planning process should be maybe led by the city, but the university should be involved, M U B. should be involved. They anchor both ends of the riverfront. Um, the Corps, you know, the Corps should be involved. The Corps of Engineers should be involved in riverfront planning, right? They hold a key piece of the puzzle there, um, with that, so. So, there you go. So, with that, that's, that's it. Do you have any questions? Thoughts, comments? Like, I got done, and she didn't even gather me.
I could.
Thank you for your input.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
Steve, thank you. This is great.
Sure.
Have, have you all been able to engage the Corps of Engineers, uh, with support of helping with cleanup of the trash behind the dam?
Oh, with trash? No, I, mostly I've been talking to Frank. What's, Jenny, what's Frank's last name?
Genesek.
Frank Genesek. I'm working on the fishing trail. He's trying to get support from the Corps for a fishing trail along that, that comes up pretty close to the dam, so, you know, it would require them to.
I think our assistant manager was working on the trash wheel.
Yeah, the trash wheel, like the Baltimore Harbor, and, uh, for funding to get a design for that.
I, I understand that, that there's funding available to support that project.
For the design of potentially a trash wheel, like the Baltimore Harbor, yeah.
I heard there was some, you know, congressionally-directed spending money that could be used to support that project. So, I mean, obviously, we, we, we'd support, looking forward on that, right? It's gonna take some, some push, right? Somebody's gotta push that forward, right? Yeah. Good, other, other thoughts, questions?
It was very thorough. That was my thought, and I appreciate that, and all the information you were able to gather from everybody and, and breaking that down into microgroups as well. I appreciate it.
Yeah, good, yeah, they really, it was fun. They, they really took it seriously. There's, there's a lot in here. There's a lot more there, uh, to squeeze out of there, so, good.
Yeah, I appreciated how many different kinds of people filled them out. So, the, um, people from Main Street, people from the Ascend program.
Ascend, and Main Street, M R T. C., um, uh, Main St-, Main Street, uh, MAP, the MAP groups.
Work in the area partners, yeah, they got.
Put it out as a link to, on the city, the city put it out as a link, so it went out to a much broader audience.
So, everybody had a, an opportunity, and a lot of people wrote a lot. That's a lot of quotes for a survey.
That's why I said in the, you know, the plan to develop a master plan, we should, we should include a, a ample opportunity for the, for citizens to be involved in the, in the planning, right, to provide input into the planning there, so. And a lot of great models out there, right? We've seen, um, we were down in Chattanooga. Chattanooga just did a big strategic plan. Chattanooga, Tennessee, right? Yeah, Chattanooga, Tennessee, just finished a big strategic planning process for the riverfront. So, there's a lot of neat, um, aspirational-type communities. So, there's a lot of neat aspirational type communities that we could learn from in, in doing a master plan. So, I really appreciate council's support, you know, pushing, pushing on, on doing a master plan for the riverfront, you know, integrated with the comprehensive plan and the downtown plan and connections with downtown and the neighborhoods. But, but I think it needs focus. The riverfront needs focus. Tends to be too much sort of opportunistic planning and all not more integrate a strategic plan for the riverfront. So, that's what we need to work on. Great, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I don't think there's ever, there's been like a student landscape architecture that did a plan at one point, but I don't think we've ever had a actual waterfront plan. So, it would be neat to both work on the plan with Main Street and the fourth district, but also to do something that covered the breadth.
The whole like, yep.
So, on to the next thing. So, now we have, this is a specific public hearing. This is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2023, 2024 annual budget. The city of Morgantown is shown in the revised budget attached here too and made a part of this ordinance as the same applies to the general fund. So, this is, if you have comments just regarding the annual, the ordinance amending the annual budget. If you're wanting to speak just on this item, this is your moment. If you want to speak on something else, the public portion comes a little bit later. So, we're going to close this. Then we're going to go to item seven, unfinished business. This is a consideration of approval of the Ruby Summer Concert Series catering event permit. And asking, is this something we're asking Vincent or? All right.
So, before we have discussion.
Yes.
I was going to recuse myself from the discussion on this.
Yes. Yep, so you would probably just step outside?
Yeah, I got to go outside.
Good evening, Council. Vincent Kidd, Director of Arts and Culture Development. City Manager asked me to come maybe tonight to help answer any unresolved questions or anything that you might have. We know this has been under discussion for a couple of weeks. So, if there's anything I can answer or help with, I'm happy to do so.
If you wanted just for the people who are here, just to give us the basic scenario, what we're looking at.
What we're talking about, yeah. Last year, we piloted beer sales at the Ruby Summer Concert Series, which was something that we had planned on from the beginning. We didn't take that on in the first year. And it's not something that we, the city, felt like we should undertake, given everything else that's going on and what our levels of staffing and expertise are. And we piloted that last year. This year, we issued the RFP again for catering of beer sales at the park. And we received a couple submissions. And those submissions were reviewed by a city staff team that looked at both of those, scored those, and then forwarded on the recommendation. We went through a lot of trials and tribulations last year, I can tell you, because with the ABCA, we worked for six months under the auspices of this idea that new catering permit would serve someone that wanted to get into that. And literally right up until April or May, they were saying, yeah, yeah, that's it. And then at the end, they said, no, you can't do that. It's public property. You have to do fairs and festivals permits, which means we had to re-scope that whole process. So, now any vendor literally has to get about six or seven fairs and festivals permits to cover the entire summer because they're only good for 10 days, although that has to be done in advance. And each permit covers roughly two concerts, the way we space it out in the summer. And so, it was piloted again last year. It was very successful. I think people enjoyed the fact that that was something that we added to the park. And we reissued the RFP this year and you have the results of how that process went. And like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have or general specifics that you might wonder about. I didn't really come prepared to make presentations. I was really just here to support you all in your decision-making.
Yeah, so if people have specific questions.
Do you want to go first? I bet you're getting ready to talk.
I can. I'm happy to talk.
You're not required. If you're wanting to talk, this is a good moment.
When we put out the RFP, did we say, and please, no one take me the wrong way, I spend my money downtown, I spend my money in the city. I do not go to Suncrest Town Center, very, very, very rarely. I do not go to University Town Center, except very, very, very rarely. I spend my money in the city. That being said, in the RFP, did we say that we would give priority to businesses within the city?
Not specifically. We, we announced it through Main Street to downtown businesses, restaurants and bars, but there was no specific recommendation for that. That was a requirement.
And do all of our food trucks, are they all based within the city or are they from all over?
They can be, they're from various places.
The, the scoring, if you look at everything except for within city limits, everything was tied. Or the, the total scores came out tied, everything except for within city limits. And.
I'm not sure that that's exactly accurate. I don't think it was all tied. I think that was one indication where there was a separation, but I don't think it was exactly the same score. But they were very, having said that, they are very similar.
They got seven points for being within the city limits and it was 208 to 215. So, if we take out, if we take out proximity to city limits, they're, they're tied on everything else. I attended every single one but one concert last year. And I don't know how anyone else on council feels or how they, how many concerts they attended. The lines were insane and the beverages were expensive. And I see that the other group, I, I read both proposals. I asked for those two or three weeks ago when this was sent to us. And I know that those were just sent out to other council members this afternoon, apparently. I didn't realize that this hadn't been sent to anyone else at that time. But it looks to me like the other company has better plans and better prices for consumers and for moving lines through. And I'm very concerned about the reason that Counselor Butcher had to recuse himself and, which we are all aware of. But, yeah, I'm, I'm not thrilled with the scoring on it.
Well, to clarify, last year's proposal that was submitted and accepted was very similar to the one you're referencing. And it was pretty much discovered, I think it was probably Fourth of July before the vendor even recovered all the costs involved. And it was discovered that many of the menu items were not selling because I think we started last year with a much more diverse, and it is a business situation. And so, I, I do give them control to respond. And they made a lot of changes, I think, during the course of the year. But it became not feasible to offer the full gamut of activities because there wasn't, there just wasn't desire. And I would agree with you with the lines and that was something that we, we addressed. It, it happens right around eight o'clock because once the opener finishes and there's that gap between that and the headliner, every single person that's interested in doing that heads that direction. And so, we've been, you know, in our delta from last year, we did talk about how there might be ways to try to speed that up and increase that process. But that, you know, it, there's that one time period where the lines get to be, because if we have 5,000 people in the park and you have three or, you know, three people down there serving beer, it's only going to move at a certain pace and that, that tends to bottleneck there and I, you know. Again, it's a business, so how many people can you afford to bring to the park at any one time and, and run the operation? It's a consideration that we allow the vendor to respond to. We don't try to get involved in that, but we do have a pretty strong say in how, kind of what products they might want to try and stuff. But it was, it was a situation where they had to scale back some of the things they were offering. They had two trailers in the beginning and they had a whole line of seltzers and wine and some other stuff to begin. And it didn't sell, so they narrowed the scope to something that was more saleable. And they made changes throughout the season. And I think they've also proposed changes potentially for this season, but it's a, it's a market demand thing. The pricing on either is, I think, affordable. We sell beer at the Metropolitan Theater at $8 a pop. Most concert venues are 15 or plus for just a 16-ounce beer when the concert promoters come in. I think they're at $10. Yeah, it's, it is an expensive proposition, but then that's, I think it's within scale on both of these. And they were, it's, it's hard, I think it's hard to make it, it's not a windfall profit going on down there. Whoever's doing the service, it's a lot of work, but that's kind of my take just from monitoring. But yeah, you're right, the lines are challenging and I don't, you know, I don't know what that answer is because they can't have 10 people work and I know that, that would.
May I ask how many people were involved in the decision? How many people were involved in the decision?
It should have been in the memo. There was a panel of three. It was Assistant City Manager Emily Mozzarelli, Damian Davis, Director of Engineering and Public Works, and Ricky Jaeger, Director of Development Services. They, they evaluated. I facilitate only because since I had spent a year working with the, one of the, one of the respondents, I didn't, I didn't want to vote myself, so.
I, I appreciate that.
Are there any other?
My only other question, I'm sorry, because I was looking through both proposals. And I saw that, I saw the one that was recommended had two trucks. And then the Mason Jar did not list how many trucks they had. Is there any?
They have a, if I remember, they have a six-tab trailer as well and a pop-up. It's similar. It's a, it's a, it's a small space. We started out with the two-truck possibility and for bigger events, that might help alleviate, again, some of the, the line issue, I'm not sure. But it's a small space and I chose the space, just that was another issue that came up down there by the bridge to move it feasibly as far away from the stage and the face painting and the main crowd just because we can't handle it in the patio area. It's just too congested. And so, that's kind of the only area in the park that made sense to have something that would involve, you know, 100 people in line at a time, if that's where we're at. But clearly, I think the one thing about the line says there is a demand for it. And I think, like I said, it was, it was successful. It was a great trial. And so, I think it's something that people are definitely interested in. I just, you know, we, Ryan and I spoke in the very first year about, do we want to get a license? Do we want to get in the beer business? And we didn't even try it the first year because I was like, let's have incremental growth. Let's not bite off more than we can chew. And after seeing that, I'm like, I don't need to be in the beer business. I'm happy just to take a nice donation because, you know, $10,000 is what's proposed by both proposers. That pays for, you know, half of the two fireworks shows that we do or any number of things, half of our opening acts. It's a, it's a, it's a way to raise money for the park, so it's a great service.
I mean, it looked to me like the, the Mason Jar also offered a better selection since you brought up selection and having to, I mean, their proposal specifically mentioned serving or offering wine, mentioned offering non-alcoholic beer, which is something that I consume pretty regularly these days. So, I liked the, the spelled-out selection as well, but I wasn't asked to score.
Yeah, we, again, we tried the wine, I think, in the beginning, in the first few weeks. And last year too, it was also new, so it was, it's, it's hard to gauge. It's, it's a, the project is going to develop over time. I think it's going to take time to get people used to it, just even being there. And I think anything is possible. We can certainly work with any vendor on what we want to offer or what we think. But again, it has to be kind of their business model that says, yes, this works for us. But I think both would be open to anything that we wanted to talk to them about.
I'm good.
Okay. So, we ready to vote?
Call for the question.
We haven't even had a motion, I don't think. We'll have to make a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I still have grave concerns over communications received by Counselor Butcher. Counselor Butcher is not here and not voting. Understood?
I think, I think my, my thing that would make me feel better in the interest of information is these recommendations were made before he was ever communicated with, correct? Their proposal, I believe, was made before anyone had emailed him, the recommendation. Not that he had anything to do with any of the recommendation.
My concern is not impropriety on Counselor Butcher's part. I do not feel there has been any type of impropriety on Counselor Butcher's part.
No, not at all.
I believe the business was improper.
At best, I would say they were naive. You know, they, they looked to indicate their enthusiasms for the project and suggest that they would be willing to do anything that was required in order to be considered. Like I said, I think that's probably naive. I think to deny them because of that would be equally unfair simply because it's, it has no consequence. It did not affect the outcome. The decision was made prior to that. It hadn't come to council yet, but the decision was made prior to that, so I wouldn't want to.
Well, the final decision lies with us, not with the scoring of staff. I just want to.
Well, what I'm saying is.
That's what we're deciding right now.
Right. The recommendation from staff was done well before that. I don't think we should.
That's the important part, I was trying to get clarification.
I don't think that should be consequential in either direction. It did not affect, that email did not affect the outcome. Nor should it have an effect on the outcome. So, either you trust what has been done by administration in the way it was done and accept that, as you suggested, you weren't on that, that, you weren't on that board. You didn't make that decision. It was brought to us, now we evaluate what we think should be appropriate.
Is this a one, was this, do we, I know last time Joe discussed, is this a one-year deal? And then next year, there'll be a new one, a new rating? Is that, Ryan, is that the case?
I think you have an answer coming.
Oh. Was this a one-year deal and then next year, we could do a new rating for them?
We are not intending to have to go out for RFP. We settled all of this last year. We actually had a multi-year agreement in place. And then, so it is our goal, not, the service doesn't require us to issue RFP, so we'd like to try to get something that we could maybe build and sustain. Because I think, you know, having, if it went out and it's a brand-new vendor next year, then it's, then they're starting in brand-new and trying to help build. So, it's, it's definitely a building thing. So, we'd like to look at a potential renewable contract for a couple of years just to build it.
And you said there, you said the city, there will be a cost to the city?
No, they're paying us $10,000.
They're paying you and that helps you.
Yeah. And we don't have to sell beer. We just, that's, that's happy to get $10,000 and not have to be in the business of selling beer.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, and I would just add to Counselor Quecky's comments that the decision on this was outside of the scope of that email to Counselor Butcher, so it was not a part of the decision process.
No, I just wanted that as clarification, just for public knowledge too.
I just think sometimes you learn things about who you're about to sign multi-year legal contracts with. And sometimes they're the types of people you want to do long-term business with and sometimes they're not. But it's fine. It's fine. I won't purchase.
I am inclined that when, when something has gone through a vetting process and when it comes to this, at the end of the vetting process, and it is to us that I'm more inclined to vote up or down on what is presented to us. And so, I'm more inclined to vote in favor of the contract as presented. That's what I'm likely to do in this case. So, are we ready to vote? All right. Please do that. Yes. Deputy Mayor of Bouganum?
Yes.
Bill Kuecky?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
No.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Saleen?
Yes.
Pass is five-one.
And we need to grab Counselor Butcher.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We're to boards and commissions?
Yes. I have.
Are there, are there some, oh, wait, sorry. We have to wait till he comes in?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Pardon. All right. So, do we have some board and commission?
I have one. I'd like to put forth Scott Frederick for the Historic Landmarks Commission.
Second.
Wonderful. All in favor, yes. Okay.
Yes.
We're good?
I'd like to nominate Matt Cummins for the tree board.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay. By acclamation?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Mayor, I have two nominees for the traffic commission. The first person is Chip Walmsley.
And I'll second for that.
Thank you. By acclamation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And the second person also for the traffic commission is Matthew Cross.
Second.
Okay. By acclamation?
By acclamation.
All right. I believe that's it for this evening?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you. Now we're to the public portion. This is the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. And that would be that you would come to the podium and state your name and you can watch the, do we have the buttons to, all right. We have Counselor Butcher on the, the buttons there.
The clavicle buttons, yeah.
Be kind. Be thorough. So, when you come up, you can see when your time is getting short and if you would just shorten up your time and if you have a few more words, please say those and then let the next, next person have an, have an opportunity.
Do you want me to get the list?
Pardon?
Do you want me to get the list?
Um, is there a list?
I think Steve took it when he took his page.
Wow.
Steve's not here anymore.
Um, so, that happens sometimes. So, why don't we sort of start up here and if, if you were somebody that wanted to speak, we can just kind of work back this way and back this way. Yep, just, come on up. Yeah, so if you would state your name.
Hi, my name is Amanda Goddard. I live in downtown Morgantown. I'm not going to take up a lot of time, but I want to speak about one of Morgantown's most urgent problems, in my opinion. As someone who frequently sees homeless people without a place to go, I wanted to speak in support for expanding housing supply and related services for the future. If people are resorting to unsafe environments like underpasses, streets, and parks to take shelter, more spaces for them need to be available to address the growing need. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're just going to go right down the row here if there's anybody who is wanting to speak. And then Vincent, the person next to you, I don't know if she's wanting to speak, okay? Then the row that Danny's in. If Danny's willing, willing, interested in speaking?
Of course. I'm Danny Ludwig. I live at 326 Broadway Avenue. Here we are again, ladies and gentlemen, for the same consecutive issue. Recently, I'm sure you are aware that we lost two unsheltered folks in a structure fire. A structure that really should have been taken down after the first gas explosion. From what I understand, my knowledge, is that firefighters didn't go in because they didn't believe anybody was in there. So here's my thinking on this. Camps are getting dismantled all the time and I know that there's a stop on dismantling camps apparently, but camps are still being dismantled. So people are going into structures that are not safe and, like, this is not the first time we've lost somebody this year in a bando. And that's an issue. That's a huge issue for our population. I know that homelessness is stigmatized, but like, we are humans and we need to treat everybody like a human being. You know, I know Morgantown wants to complain about the homeless population, but what are we really doing about it? Bartlett is not taking any clients right now. They may not even be open next year, or the rest of the year, let's say. So people are resorting to, to bandos, which is not safe. So what I would like to see happen, and it's been talked about a little bit, is a managed camp where all the hubs of service can come and connect people to housing, treatment, whatever they need to do. There's a bunch of us that work for nonprofit organizations that can come there and be there twenty-four, seven, around the clock. We've done this before and unfortunately, it wasn't a complete success, but everybody that was there got housed. So it was a huge success in my eyes. But, I mean, like, we're going to lose more people if we don't do something about this. People don't want to camp because their, their stuff's getting thrown away. So like, where do we send them? We don't have affordable housing here in Morgantown. The low-income housing, if you've ever been in it, the only thing that's holding them up is the cockroaches moving around. So like, you know, that's not a safe place for people to be either, to be quite honest. But we, as a community, that have different hubs of organizations that have services, need to come together and find a solution before somebody else gets their life taken away from a structure fire. You know, I mean, I don't know, I don't, I don't know, I don't have all the answers, but I'm willing to come to the table and figure it out. Because people that I care about are dying all the time. And again, this is not the first homeless person or people that have died in structures this year. This is the fourth we've had this year in a bando. Like, what are we, what are we doing as a city? Complaining? That's what we're doing. What about a solution? We need a solution together. We can't, I can't do this alone. People that are here with me, that are advocating for this cause, we can't do this alone. We have to do this together. And we need people to come to the table and figure it out. Because I'm tired of burying people that I care about. And this, this is a lot. This means a lot to me and a lot of other people. You know, so like, we need to do something. A, a community that talks about all-inclusive, then let's do it. I can't really, I can't stress that enough. I cannot. I don't even want to do my job anymore because it's so fucking heartbreaking. Excuse my language. It is. It's so sad. I've been doing this for almost six years. And I'm still fighting the same fight constantly. But we need to do something together. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in that row that wants to speak? Yeah.
I'm Jennifer Powell and I also work with this population and I just want to say, I love them. I don't want to lose any more either. We've got to come together and find a solution. I'm willing to help any way that I can. But Danny's right. We, those of us that are already doing it can't do it alone. We need the city's help. We need the help from the people that hate them. We need everybody to come together. And I'll tell you, working with them, even with addiction issues, even with mental health issues, I just love them. I also work in another position with drunk college kids. I drive Uber and they drive me nuts. I'd rather work with homeless people experiencing mental health or addiction issues any day. They're kinder, they're sweeter, they've, they've got some kind of light shining out of their eyes despite their issues. Everybody does, though. Everybody's got something redemptive in them and if we keep them alive long enough, they've got so much potential. These people are mostly young, too. A lot of them are fresh out of high school. Some have been to college. Some have degrees. It's crazy what addiction will do to people, or mental health, or poverty. And, and we really do need better affordable housing. I've, I've got, I've got, I lost a brother in, in affordable housing. That was terrifying. And my family wanted to seek that person out and get that shut down, but we're afraid of more homelessness because there's so little places that are affordable. It's, it's very big of a problem and we need a community center. We need somewhere where the youth are, have got something to look forward to in their day, to where they don't turn to something to do that is destructive like drugs. I mean, it's just, there's so much, there's so many pieces to this problem. We really need to work together as a community, but tearing down encampments is terrible. Slicing tents and taking exactly what they need and leaving the garbage, what's the point in that? Yeah. Some of the, the treatment of our homeless population and the views of people in the community, it's, it's terrible. They're humans and we, we just, we just love them and we want you guys to love them too and we want everybody to work together on this because we're not going to find a way out without it. We're not going to have a clean riverbank for everybody to enjoy without solving this, but slicing up tents isn't going to fix it. That's my piece.
So is there anyone in the back row that's wishing to speak? Oh, someone in the third row.
Hi, my name is Amanda Huffman and I live at 984 Willie Street. And I work with the population of unhoused people and recovering people and active addiction. And there's clearly a disconnect between the community and the unhoused, which is disheartening, but also people don't understand what they don't know, right? So if they've never really experienced these things, how would they truly understand what any of these people go through? You know, I lived unhoused for a really long time and I have years of recovery and, you know, I'm in college and I have my kids and all of these things are good and well in my life, but the only reason that I'm here is because I lived in a community where people fed me and they clothed me and they gave me water and they treated me like a human being and they saw me when I didn't see myself. So the only solution that I can really see in this situation is if, you know, the community comes together and, and helps. And in other places in the U.S., cities have come together literally as a treatment model. The businesses, the doctors, housing is all in unison and trying to help people who suffer from substance use disorder or mental health diagnosis because they're humans and they matter. You know, we're not supposed to go through life alone. We're not meant to as humans. Part of the reason that we grow and we learn and we love is from others. So, you know, the opposite of addiction is human connection. And I think people dying alone, hiding in the woods or in a burning building because they felt like no one cared, that's very sad to me. And I hope that, you know, my kids and other kids their age never have to experience that feeling that people feel today in 2024. Thank you.
So when, anyone else wishing to speak in that sort of back corner?
Hello, my name is Erin Shelton. I am here to speak in support for Danny's idea of a managed camp. I know that the response to the suggestion from a lot of people is going to be that this isn't the best way to address homelessness, but a lot of the other ways that we all work to address homelessness every day, we're running into a lot of barriers to helping folks in those ways. So I work with the unhoused population every day as well. There are, you know, people on the streets that I consider some of my dearest friends and loved ones. You know, and I've met people through this work who have become like my family and it hurts my heart to know that other people, you know, see them and can only think of them as an inconvenience to the rest of us. Because the safety of the people in our community is our responsibility. And they are on the streets because we have failed them. We have failed them during so many vulnerable moments in their life when they had to interact with the child welfare system, the public school system, the criminal justice system, and we're still failing them now. Every single time someone walks past an unhoused individual on the street and sees them as an inconvenience instead of someone who has experienced unimaginable trauma that needs our help. We have disabled folks out here suffering and dying because no one cares enough to take care of them and they can't take care of themselves. We have people burning to death in fires and abandoned buildings because they don't have a safe place to lay their head, not even outside. In a perfect world, every single one of us would find it in our hearts to take these people into our homes, show them love and meet their basic needs. But since we don't live in that world, the next best thing would be at least having enough shelter beds for those experiencing homelessness in our community. But we don't have that right now and in fact, we've never been further from that. We have many more individuals experiencing homelessness than we have shelter beds in this town. So if individuals, organizations, and political entities in this city cannot come together and care for those who need our help, the least we can do is allow them to care for themselves and each other in the best way they know how without criminalizing them, running them off, destroying their campsites and trashing their belongings. Homelessness is a moral and policy failure and if we can't come up with a better solution, the least you can do is give them a safe place to exist.
So is there anyone else on this side of the room that was wishing to speak? Okay. I don't know who on this side of the room wishes to speak, but this would be your.
Sean Smith, I live on 207 Pia Be Lane. Thank you all for, for what you do for the unhoused. It's, it's big. I, I came today to just let everyone know and introduce myself. I'm Sean Smith. I'm running for the Board of Education here in Montegalia County. It really hit me hard a few, a few months ago when I was at a board meeting and I understood that in our county, county-wide, we have two-hundred-and-seventy kids who are considered homeless and that is near and dear to my heart. And after that, we took in consideration running for Board of Education and here we are, and here we are taking that leap. So born and raised here in the area. My wife is from Westover, so down on the river she was born and raised. We have two daughters, which is why I spend all my time in, in, on High Street. I have one daughter who is ten, who plays volleyball. They, they use the gym up here at the church on the corner. And I have another daughter who spends her life at the Met and the Morgantown Theater Company. So you can see me selling tickets and selling flowers out front for all of the events at the Met and the wonderful people there at Morgantown Theater Company and thank Heath and Sterling for all the work they do. Met my wife here at West Virginia University. I got an industrial engineering degree. I serve on many boards and committees throughout the, throughout the county. One that I'm very, very, very proud of is a source. It's a 501(c) where we feed the kids at Skyview Elementary. We give backpacks to all the kids who are, go hungry during the weekends. So we, now it's been going on for many years now and we probably, I think we pack almost a thousand backpacks every single week to give to the kids. So I think there are things we can do outside of just sitting at a board meeting and, and doing things for education. We've got to remember that these kids can't come and learn because of the situations that they find themselves in. Now homeless is, there's different definitions of that. Not unhoused, they could be in different living situations, but I think there's a lot of opportunity there. So I was speaking the other day. I have a mentor and a good friend of mine that everyone in the room probably knows, Charlene Marshall. And her and I were spending some time at her house the other day and we were talking about city council and, and all the time that she had spent in doing things in the community. And I said, I, this is the one place I haven't been yet, so I wanted to come and introduce myself and thank you all for, for serving in our county and all that you do. We've received a lot of local support from local businesses and other. Um, we've received a lot of local support from local businesses and other people and, and we appreciate that and we'd appreciate your support as, as we do this. And thank you for, for serving our community. So the biggest thing you can do on May 14th is get out there and vote. I didn't say you had to vote for me, but get out there and vote because it's extremely, extremely important. We have people in our, on our boards for education and, and House of Delegates and many other things that are going on. It's important that we get out there and vote. So thanks again.
Thank you. So sort of the next row back, if there's anyone who's wishing to speak. And then anybody else on this side, whoever would like to come in?
Sorry, put them back. Andy Cronin, New York, 7th Ward, Human Rights Commission Chair. I earlier mentioned that there's a spring fair housing conference that's being held in Morgantown. I looked it up. It is on April 18th, 2024, from 8:30 until 4:30, or from 9 until 6, depending on which entry you believe on their webpage. But it's being held by the West Virginia Human Rights Commission at the Marriott Waterfront. Their web address is hrc.wv.gov. And the sad part is it costs $75 to get in. Unless you want a special luncheon, it's an extra $4. But still, it, it's meant to be educational for landlords, tenants, businesses, anybody who has any interest in housing, which is everybody, to come and find out what's going on with the law and what rights and duties there are. I also mentioned that April is a special month for many different things. It is Arab American Heritage Month. It is autism awareness, celebrate diversity, Earth Month, National Child Abuse Prevention Month and National Volunteer Month. I can't read my writing, what? The diversity, the Leadership Studies Program and Native American Studies Program at WVU are conducting a Human Rights Film Series. There is only one left because I wasn't here last time. Uh, it's being held on the 10th of April from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in G-20 Min-Sai Hall, the one across the walking bridge from the BNE School, I hear. Uh, there's a, it's about, uh, Native American women who are involuntarily sterilized up until recently by the U.S. government and its facilities, either hospitals or orphanages. But there's thousands of them who were. And it wasn't just Native Americans, but this film speaks to the Native American experience. Then it's Human Rights Commission Meeting is April 18th at 6:30 at the Public Safety Building. And anybody who'd like to be a commissioner is asked to please come to one of our meetings first to see if you like us or not. Don't want to waste anybody's time. Estrosexual Assault Awareness Month. The Human Rights Commission of Morgantown is charged with taking care of veterans' rights as well as several others, but that's one of our exclusive jurisdictions is veterans. And the U.S. military has been doing a great deal with Sexual Assault Awareness Month because the numbers are being reported in the military of sexual assault, both to men and women, mostly by their fellow officers and military members are astounding. And in 2012, 2008, I believe, a study was done. And so 90% of the people who made complaints about sexual assault were discharged after making the complaint. So we're turning that around, hopefully. In 2016, there's the Ferguson Exam Kit Law, 18 USC 3772, which requires that all victims of sexual assault be given a rape kit, free of cost, administered by a hospital, free of cost, that they are entitled to a copy of the report. And the rape kit must be kept for 20 years unless the law says less. Something eludes me. Uh, they have the right to notification of the results and written notification prior to the destruction of rape kits. Emergency rooms, semi-separate subject, are required to be screened by statute for domestic violence under JCO and the ACA and for other federal statutes. WVU Hospital has removed all of its information about domestic violence. And as one who frequents the place frequently, they used to have, put a little blue sticker on the bottom of your own cup if you're experiencing domestic violence or if you're in trouble at home. Those are all gone. All of the posters that mention domestic violence are all gone. And not a single question is asked when you walk in the door at triage. If you're, do you feel safe at home? Is it they do is, "Do you feel safe at home?" And just let go of that. They're not screening for domestic violence. And that's not anything city council can fix. But I would just like to make people aware of that and ask that the hospital, please get back in their game. Thank you. Uh, my trash didn't get picked up this week.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Please go ahead. Hi, uh, I'm Lindsay. I live in Danielle's district, um, up in Woodburn. I don't really know where to start. Raise your hand if you're here because you think homeless people in Morgantown should be treated like people with souls, living, breathing, more, more humanity. There's a lot of us and we're just starting. We're just getting organized. So I think it's good for y'all to know that and see that because sometimes I see kind of blank stares coming from the dice up here. I, Jen, like, I just love you. I just met Jen for the first time last week. I, um, got to spend lunch at the Red Door with some potential plaintiffs. And, um, they're just these beautiful people. I, we, my, my young, my baby social workers, um, were there with me. And after one experience, oh, two, they did a day out with the Coalition in homelessness, but they're both like now thinking this might be work that they want to do because they were so moved by the people that we met. And they're really, um, I don't want to speak on their behalf, they might be watching, but really horrified by the way that we talk about, um, these folks, um, by the way we treat them. The folks I talk about, they know how we talk about them in this town. They're not dumb. Imagine being so like publicly loathed and what that does to you as a person. I really think we should all like sit with that more often because it's, it's, um, it's really heartbreaking. Uh, we met a guy, um, I'll call him Johnny. And, you know, he lost his wife four years ago. They'd been married for about 20 years, I think is what he said. And that loss, like, he just said has wrecked him. And so it's like just him and his dog. And they lived in an encampment, um, for quite some time across the bridge in Westover that Morgantown Police helped the railroad tear down about two weeks ago without notice. Um, some of the folks had been there for years. He hadn't, but he'd definitely been there long enough for y'all to follow your own policy about notification before tearing down an encampment. But yeah, he was this beautiful guy and he's like been through trauma that I think, I mean, I've experienced loss. I imagine many of you all have as well. And, um, I've been really close to the brink. And so I think it's really easy for, you know, I think you all spoke about it much more eloquently than I can. But we're all very close, much closer to these folks than we think we are. Um, and I think we forget that. I, um, think there's a real void of leadership on this issue. I want to commend Councilwoman, Councilwoman Trumbull and Councilwoman Butcher. I see your names most often. I see you doing the work most often and I want you both to know that I really appreciate you. You all should be meeting these folks. You should be talking to them individually. You should be at the Red Door, having lunch with them and hearing their stories and learning about them and their lives because it changes you forever. You, you don't come back from it. I don't know how y'all do the work. Like, God bless you because how could you do the work, um, day in and day out? But when you all don't speak on the issue, what that creates is this vacuum, vacuum where horrible Facebook groups spread misinformation. I mean, they're, they're essentially terrorists. They terrorize one of your own and there's just nothing from you guys, nothing. Why? You owe this to those folks because they're people who live here. Whether you like it or not, they're our neighbors. They're citizens just like I am of Morgantown and they deserve your respect and they deserve you to work for them the same way you would work for any of us. And so I'm really disappointed in that void of leadership of which all of you are a part. Yeah, and I guess the, I only have 16 seconds left, but you know, I live here. I love them. You're right, you can't, Jen's right, you can't, can't talk to them and not love them. And I hope to continue doing the work. I hope we continue to get organized and I'm just so proud of all the folks that are here tonight speaking on behalf of our unhoused neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you. And is there anyone else? Yes, please. There's plenty of time for everybody.
Forgive me, I didn't actually come here planning to speak, but I was moved. Thank you. I can't make everyone care. And I'm certainly not going to solve a stigma in two minutes, four minutes, less. But I would hope that you would consider for a moment, and I think we can all care, when we realize that sometimes these people are born into a houseless situation, that these are children. When you take away their safety net, there is absolutely nothing that they can do or could have done. And there's something about that that isn't fair. Most people in America are living paycheck to paycheck and are one misfortune away from houselessness. That's you, that's your neighbors, that's a lot of people in this room. And I do believe that the most basic reason that everyone came to this room on either side of this podium is because we do care about this community and we do care about each other. And this is an issue that has no easy or clear solution. But because this is a room of people who care, I would ask everyone to look to the people who are already working with these communities, who see this problem every day, who knows, know what works, what doesn't, and can steer us in that direction toward an even better solution. And I would ask that you not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Let us do what we can now, please.
Uh, hey, everybody. My name is Leslie Nash. I live at 416 Park Street and I do think I've met everyone at city council at this point. So like many or most of the people here for the public portion tonight, I've come to make some comments about the, the situation that Morgantown has found itself in with our unhoused neighbors. A lot of you have had to hear me speak at multiple city council meetings over the last couple of months. And the conversation has been pretty similar each time. And again, I, I am not one of our service providers who works directly with our unhoused neighbors on a day-to-day basis, so I'm not going to try to step on their toes and say things that they've already said, again, better than I could. Homelessness is a crisis for the people who are in it. But most communities, including ours, treat it as a crisis for the people who have to see it as if that's the worst thing that could ever happen to us. Having to see someone going through a mental health crisis or having to see someone who has lost their job and lost their home. Again, it makes us feel bad and we don't like that. And again, as a crisis, it's, it's one that has a pretty proven solution at this point. There are literal decades of research from countries and cities all over the world showing that the only thing that works is housing first, low barrier, no barrier, housing first, taking people as they are regardless of mental health status, regardless of health, regardless of age, regardless of gender sexuality, regardless of whether or not you have a substance use disorder of any kind. That is what everybody has known for 20 or 30 years. And yet we continue to find ourselves in a situation where the responses to this crisis that we attempt are criminalization, pushing people out, removing encampments, increasing enforcement against people who have nowhere to go and creating shelters that do have high barriers and low capacity, which is why we are in the situation we are in. And when it all comes down to it, the fact of the matter is that regardless of how people personally feel about it, everyone has to live somewhere. Are they are going to die in public and in abandoned buildings and in parks and in forests and in the river and where this is going to keep happening? Because we, again, as a community, have been unwilling to devote the resources that it takes to actually provide the proven solution to this crisis and have been unwilling to muster the courage to do it in the face of a few vocal members of the community who have decided that posting pictures of homeless people on Facebook is acceptable, which it is absolutely not. So, you know, again, I've said this before, I'll probably get to come up here and say it again. But at the end of it all, you know, I, I think, coming back to what other people have said, the only way that we get out of this is by actually caring for each other. And none of this works until we come to an understanding that each of these lives is just as precious as our own. There's a, a great quote by Ruth Gilmore Wilson. It's one of the great abolitionists of our age, you know, where life is precious, life is precious. And I think that's really the approach that we need to take here or we're going to keep doing this again and again and again, till more people die. So thank you for your time.
Hi. I'm Sid McGuinness. I'm a law student here in my second year at WVU. And I tell you that not to try to give you guys any kind of false sense of authority on my part, but to make it clear to you that not just unhoused care workers or people that care about this, there are multiple groups of people who want the unhoused issue fixed and want to see those movements forward from you all. These people are people's kids, they're their parents, they're their brothers, they're their sisters. They aren't some faceless person that you're never going to see again. They're an actual human being that needs help. And as far as what's causing the problem, it's not as simple as getting over an addiction or getting a job. Getting over an addiction requires help, aid, assistance, rehabilitation. And if they can't afford housing, how exactly do you expect them to afford rehab? And beyond that, with getting a job, I don't know if any of you guys have been in the job market recently, but it's next to impossible and incredibly impossible to find one that pays you a living wage and gives you the ability to take care of yourself, to afford anything, let alone housing. And I just want to pose this for you guys, that if the roles were reversed, if any one of you were in these situations, if you hadn't gotten the luck and the treatment and the help that you've gotten that's led you to where you sit today before all of us and you were in their shoes, you would be petrified, terrified of your life, terrified going through every day and absolutely desperate for the compassion of others. So think, please just think about that going forward on this. Like, if you were in their shoes, you would be just as desperate for help and compassion and in need of it as they are. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I didn't come here to speak tonight. I don't live in Morgantown, but I want to introduce you to the homeless population. I was one. Um, I do fair housing at the Fairmont Morgantown Housing Authority. I'm a housing advocate. And when I got that job, I was homeless. I was couch surfing. We are one paycheck away. Only one, some less. I went to a shelter because, the only reason I knew about it was because I had a job interview there. I came to get this fair housing proclamation late. And apparently there was a reason I was to come late. I want you to look at what homeless look like. I had a fair housing town hall meeting at the Wells Hills Community Center last Thursday. There were three items on that list as far as impediments that the community members who came wanted to address. And, and they resound in my head, six, nine and one, right? And one of those things was a sense of community that was missing. And as I sit here today and I listen to those members who work with the unhoused populations, of which I have been one as recently as two and a half years ago. I, um, see that there's a sense of community that's missing in this city. And it's unfortunate. And that's, that lack thereof was mentioned in a fair housing meeting. How are we going to make affordable housing? How are we going to make it accessible for those who want to age in place? For those who may be downsizing because their kids went to college? And it's got to start with a sense of community and a sense of ownership. What I asked for those individuals was to write on an index card for me an action step they were willing to take. It sounds like the action step means to, means to be, to meet your neighbor. It sounds like the action step means to meet your neighbor. That's all I have to say.
And you're going to get your proclamation, because Annie, right behind you. And you all should meet your neighbor behind, I don't know if you know each other, but she received it for you guys. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Connie Banta. Two weeks ago, I moved my daughter and her family from Jacksonville, Florida, back to Morgantown. She grew up here her whole life, went to WVU, Foundation Scholar, moved to Jacksonville, Florida, has a two-year-old daughter and is pregnant now. She moved back to West Virginia and back to Morgantown because she said, "Mom, I need a village. I need a village." She has one with us, my husband and myself, and her husband's parents. That's not enough. I want her to live in a community that is a village. My vision is that she live in a place where people take care of each other, that people have enough food, that the people have shelter, that people can live safely. We all need a village. And people are going to move back, you know, these are professional folks, my daughter and her husband. And they left a lot in Florida to be here. And if they can't feel like they're living in a community that is humane and takes care of its own people, they're not going to stay. Let's make a village.
Is there anyone else? All right. Now we're to the consent agenda, item 10. So the consent agenda, we vote on as is unless somebody has a consideration and they would like to remove it from the consent agenda. So I'm going to read through it, and then we will have a motion, and then we will pass whatever remains on the consent agenda. So item A is consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023, 2024 annual budget of the City of Morgantown as shown in the revised budget attached here too, and made a part of this ordinance as the same applies to the general fund. The first reading was third month, 19th day of '24. And then item B in the consent agenda is consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance updating the codified ordinances of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia. And is there a motion?
Can we remove item B from the consent agenda?
Sure, that's your priority.
I just had some questions.
Yeah. So then, remaining on the consent agenda is, should we have a second on that? I don't know if we, do we need any city attorneys? Just one person can take it off, is that correct? Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda with just item A?
Thank you.
Second.
Will we have a second? Okay, I'm sorry, missed that. All right, if we would please call, please call the roll.
Yes, Deputy Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yep.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously, and now we could, then we can just, can we consider then item B on its own?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. So now we would consider the approval of the first reading of an ordinance updating the codified ordinances of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia. And is there a motion to consider this? Pardon?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. And then, is this something that we would perhaps ask our city attorney?
The city attorney, please.
Why are we doing this? What is it?
Mayor and Council, this is an ordinance that is a kind of administrative action by council. This adds to the published city code, the ordinances themselves that have been adopted by city council over the past period of time, depending on how often the recodification is done. So the city uses a publisher, currently Munichode, to publish what's called a codified version of the ordinances you all pass as council, and that's a publicly accessible version of the city's laws so that it's organized nicely and available to the public, members of council, and others to review those laws. This ordinance will authorize and direct the publisher to include those adopted ordinance in the codified version of your laws that are published.
So the ordinances we already passed, and now they're in the codified version.
Okay. For how many years are we going back?
I am not certain.
Okay.
These are, historically, the publisher has usually provided these twice annually, I think. The city has used different time periods over the years.
Okay. I was just wondering what we were doing. Thank you.
Yes, it's a very good question, and you haven't seen that very much before.
No.
Call for the question.
All right.
Deputy Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Now we're under new business. Item A, consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending the private outdoor designated areas in the City of Morgantown. And ask our city attorney if he would explain what's included here.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is a proposed update to the ordinance city council adopted a couple of months ago establishing a private outdoor designated area under the legislation passed in 2023. State legislature updated that authorizing law, this just concluded regular session, to make a couple changes, and this ordinance is intended to track those as well as to make one proposed change to the committee that will review applications of participants. So the legislation that passed, it was House Bill 5295, expanded the types of businesses that can participate in private outdoor designated areas, specifically to ensure that fair and festival permits can be held within the POTA area while the POTA is still ongoing, that was previously prohibited by the original law. The law that passed also noted that any Class A, Class B, or Class S2 and Class S2 is a fair and festival permit licensee can apply to get a permit. But apparently, because of how the definition of qualified permit holder was changed in the version passed by the Senate, those licenses only remain available to licensees that have what's called a private club license under Chapter 60, Article 7, so basically those bars and restaurants that are able to serve liquor. We sent the proposed update to ABCA and talked with their council and their local representative about this issue, and also talked to at least one local legislator. So hopefully, that's something they'll see if they can address. It looks like the legislature intended to expand access to different business types. That's something that the city council and Main Street Morgantown worked on, and I think was the intent of the legislature, but maybe didn't happen with the way the law ended up being passed. This ordinance does list those expanded license types and would allow anybody with a Class A license to apply through the city process, but there may not be an option to get the actual permit issued by ABCA unless you have a liquor license. Probably the bigger change than the one that was more central to all of our businesses that talked to Main Street and the city council about participating is the law removes the joint and sever liability requirement. So bars and restaurants that participate will not have to enter an agreement that says they are jointly and separately liable for any license violations. That was a big concern among our business community and has been removed by the bill the legislature passed. So those changes are included in this update. The other proposed change is to add a staff member to the committee that reviews applications locally. The city staff requested that addition so that they could communicate with the committee members about the business requirements or characteristics licensed here with the city, any violations or other issues. So this will also take effect on the prior effective date, May 15. And if you have any questions about the ordinance types, I'd be happy to address those.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Now I have a question.
Please, get right in there.
So you said that we're leaving the additional license types in this ordinance. If by chance the state changes this during an interim or special session, we won't have to make any additional updates to ours?
I think that's right, I mean, it depends on the change, but yes. If this were expanded to effectively allow all Class A licensees to participate, then you wouldn't need to change this ordinance. And certainly, if council would like to change this version to specifically track the way state law is now, I can prepare that update. We did get other review comments from ABCA about handling fairs and festivals and things, so we may have additional follow-up work later anyway.
And do we know which city staff position will be serving on the committee?
As drafted in the ordinance, it's just designee of the city manager.
With the removal of joint severability, sever, whatever it is. Severable liability, how does liability work now?
My understanding is that it will be the same as it is for any operator. So the joint sever liability provision was with respect to violations that are enforced by ABCA. So if there's a violation now, I think it would have to be traced back to the particular licensee.
And so your recommendation is that we leave Class A in at this time in hopes that the legislature changes that back?
I don't think that, I don't think that does any real harm here. The only thing is, we should make clear to people who apply that unless they do have the ability to serve liquor, they may not be able to get the actual Class S4 permit from ABCA. And so just, if that may cause confusion, we can provide an amendment.
In our application process, we make that known to the people applying?
We can certainly.
Are we taking on all comers?
We can include that, a notice. The city is working on a webpage to kind of compile all this information as well as, they've already drafted an application and a permit form. There's a staff working group that meets tomorrow afternoon. I can bring that up with them.
Very good. So where are we?
Just on the thought we had it.
Call a question?
So close.
I think we're to that point. Time for the question.
Deputy Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Item B, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing requests for congressionally-directed spending from Morgantown Fire Station Training Facility and for downtown historic revitalization subgrant program, and ask our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council, the city's been very active over the last number of years in applying for and securing some pretty significant grants that has helped us through the COVID era, but also has helped us step up some of the other programs that council has directed, that we establish. This is no different, this is kind of the time of year that, it's a grant cycle for congressional-directed spending, and our wonderful grant writer has been very active in making sure that the city is represented in trying to secure some of these funds. The current proposal is that we apply for, and we're asking for council support on this in the form of a resolution, that $2 million be proposed and be authorized to be applied for for the establishment and funding of downtown historic district revitalization subgrant program, which basically allows the city to enter into agreements with downtown business owners, nonprofits, businesses, building owners, and so forth, for renovation and restoration of historical buildings and streetscape design improvements. So that's one, the overall goal obviously is to protect and preserve the historic nature of the downtown. The second portion of the grant application would be a $4 million request that would allow for fire station expansion. As you know, we're in the middle of, we've received some funding for the construction of the new fire station, and we were close to completing the purchase of the property there. As we've gone through the design process, the original amount that we applied for is far below what the expected cost is going to be. We all know what's happened with the costs over time. So it is, it's the recommendation that $4 million be applied for that particular fire stations, but in addition for the expansion, including training rooms, training mezzanine, expansion of the apron, and parking lot for training purposes. That would help kind of flesh out a pretty good portion of the balance of the cost of that project. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
The deadline was extended, so you decided to sneak a few more in there?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a good thing, right?
I like that thought, yeah.
They couldn't pass a budget, so they end. I did have one question, just, do you have, you probably don't yet, but do you have any kind of ideas on exactly how we're, the $2 million, is that just more of an expansion of the kind of grants we had done before with ARPA dollars? Or is that what you're thinking with that?
Yes, but there will be, have to be a process in place for the allocation of those dollars and for tracking those dollars that they meet the intent of the grant program.
Okay.
It's in addition to the ARPA dollars that you're talking about, sure.
Are we ready? All right, please. Deputy Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. City managers report.
Thank you again, Mayor. Some of you had the opportunity to visit the renovated city hall building. I hope you're as impressed as I am with how well that has turned out. This was an old building that has been added on and added on for many years, and I think that the work that our consultant and our city staff has done in terms of space utilization in order to accommodate the services that the city provides, I think is pretty remarkable. It really presents well, it represents who we are, I think, and I think people going there to do business with the city is going to feel comfortable going. Just wanted to let you know that the actual move-in started yesterday and continued today, that's one reason that our finance director- And continued today. That's one reason that our finance director wasn't here today. He was in the middle of moving. So we're anticipating that that move will continue over the next couple of weeks, but I can tell you, our staff is very excited. The other thing I would remind you of is that April 15th at 3:00, the Norwood Fire Station project will be presented, and there will be a ceremony. We'd invite all of you to attend. While you're there, you might be interested in climbing up on, well, maybe not, but at least walking around our new ladder truck that was recently delivered to us. It's a great piece of equipment, and I think will help serve our community well over the next many years. That's all I have at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
And we might add the renovated fire station.
The.
The baby box, we're doing, we're opening the baby box.
Yes, that's all at 3:00 on 15th, yes.
Is that new fire truck living in Norwood Station currently?
For now, yeah. That's where it will be, so it'll be available for whatever you want to do. You want to take a ride on it, you're welcome to do that, too.
You're making a lot of promises. I'm going to have to check on the guys over there.
I will not be driving it.
All right. Report from the city clerk.
Yes, Mayor. I just want to remind folks how they can be notified of things that are going on in the city, such as getting on a list to receive an agenda or minutes, emergency alerts, things like that. So really quick, if you go to our city's website at MorgantownWV.gov, there is a search, search field, and it says, "How can we help you?" So if you click in there and you type in notify me, notify me will pop up, and you just select that. And there is a way that you put your email address in there, or a phone number, cell phone number. You can select under Agenda Center that you would like to have the Bicycle Board Agenda or Minutes, or City Council, or Building Commission. You could also select that you would like to be alerted of any emergency alerts, or bid postings for construction, engineering, fire department, things like that, calendar, news flashes. All of that is on our website, and it's pretty easy. Just select how you would like to be notified, and every time someone posts something on our, on our city's website, then you will need, be notified. It's very handy. So again, go to MorgantownWV.gov and type in notify me in the search field, and that'll take you there. And then also wanted to share that this Saturday, the Morgantown Fire Civil Service Commission, in conjunction with the Morgantown Fire Department, will be hosting an agility open house for prospective firefighter candidates, and that begins at 10:00 AM. The event will take place at the Northside Fire Station located at 1,000 Van Boris Road. For those who wish to participate in the open house, they can email me or come visit me over at City Hall now, starting tomorrow, or call, and I can give them all the information that they need. This agility open house is essentially an opportunity for folks to practice and use all of the equipment used in the official agility test. They can ask questions and gain a stronger understanding of what it takes to successfully complete the agility portion of the candidate test, and they have the opportunity to ask questions and speak to Lieutenant John Moore, who basically runs that agility exam. It's, and I'd like to share also, if you, if folks go onto the city's website and they type in fire job interest form, somewhere along in that form, there's a link that shows the actual agility test, what types, what the things that they have to do. It's very interesting. So if folks are interested in that, take an opportunity to click that link and learn all about it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone who's having to move this week on city staff. It's a lot of, a lot of work and figuring out the internet is sort of the last thing, figuring out all the different things that you need to do to switch over offices is a big, takes a lot of effort. And then all the people that are helping to do that. So, report from the city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have a report this evening.
Thank you. Report from council members. Council Butcher, do you want to start?
I can, sure. So a couple of things, I guess, since our last meeting, we had a public report. I was able to attend a case conferencing meeting with a lot of service providers and Bartlet's staff as well to place individuals in the housing. I think there was probably, I mean, in terms of number of service providers, close to 30 people in there. I was on Zoom, so it's a little hard for me to count everybody, but I think we had like 12 different agencies represented, somewhere around that. And that was really encouraging just to see how everybody was focused on getting these 28 people housed and seeing what their status was with vouchers, seeing what kind of programs we could take advantage of for each specific person, and what everybody's different expertise could bring to the table for those different people. So that was a pretty encouraging endeavor, and I think like mostly orchestrated by the board of Bartlet, so it's an encouraging way, direction to see them going in, especially given the issues that they're facing right now. We had a Suncrest Neighborhood Meeting, and we had members of Star City Fire Department there, talking about their financial issues. You know, it's one of our neighbors, and definitely fires in Star City are going to affect Morgantown, especially Seventh Ward. So it was good to hear about their issues. I got to talk with several of them afterwards. I've talked with some of them before, because they've been going through this for a long time. And they just got more money from the state, and I don't know, you read it in the paper, and it says, "Fire, volunteer fire departments are getting $12 million." I talked to them. The share that Star City Fire Department is getting from that is $350,000. So it's nothing for them. That might pay for some equipment. Anyway, we also talked about our neighborhood sign. I think we're moving along with that. Matt Cross should have some stuff publicly and like in our sort of neighborhood email chain for people to consider as far as artists for that. We're waiting on one more to get back, but if they don't soon, we're just going to put it all up there without that person, because otherwise we're going to wait forever. And then, yeah, as Ms. Ashcraft said earlier, I was at the Fair Housing Town Hall with, with Bill, was there as well. We ended up in the same group, so, as well as, I believe both the county planner and the city planner ended up in the same group. But it was, I thought it was a really well-done event. I think there's ways that you could have structured that event. The thing that I expected from that event was for them to kind of talk about the ways people are discriminated before they could get into housing, and how that limits people's access to housing. But they did also have a large focus on the biggest barrier to housing, which is cost. And so that was really intentional by them, and I think they did a good job of structuring the meeting in such a way that we all got to kind of talk, talk about things and brainstorm, and then they told us, "Tell us one thing that you will do about it," which I thought was just a really cool way to structure that meeting. And as you could tell from Vicky, she can hold a meeting well. I wanted to thank you all for coming out tonight to talk about this. We, anytime you guys come and speak to council, we do listen, and it does make us think and affect the way things happen, and it's important. And so thanks for coming out to speak. I assure you that there are people all over the city that are, care about this and want to do good work. I talk to a lot of them all the time. And so, you know, I just want to say, like, we see you, we hear you, and we understand. And I know from my perspective, you know, I think that housing is definitely the biggest issue that we have to face in the next decade. And so it's something we need to face head-on, and I appreciate everybody's thoughts tonight, and I hope that we can take some of them into consideration. Thank you.
We had a Greenmont Neighborhood Association a week ago Monday, and Planner Ricky Jaeger came and spoke about the idea of a pocket park, which was well-received by the neighborhood group, and so they are formulating ideas around how to best perhaps pursue that. So that was really nice of him to come and share that information with, with us. And I learned last week that the Division of Highways is going to have an environmental assessment informational workshop on April 17th regarding the bridge over the Mon River to the industrial park. And so that is open to the public. It'll be at Westwood Middle School from 5:00 to 8:00. If you want to learn more about the environmental impacts, or the environmental assessment study.
What was the date on that one more time?
It was April, it is going to be April 17th from 5:00 to 8:00 at Westwood Middle. And this, a week ago, this past Wednesday, six days ago, the trail lighting went into operation on the, above the Deckers Creek Rail Trail on Sturgis Street, which is the last bridge on the Deckers Creek Trail before you get to the amphitheater. So that lighting will be operational daily from dusk to dawn. And that was 10 years in the making, so that was a long project. There is a MUB meeting next Tuesday, and if you have any items you'd like questions answered on, please let me know, and I'll echo Councilor Butcher's comments that we do appreciate people that come and speak. We hear you, and those are important issues to us as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, I very much enjoy when anyone from the public comes and speaks. I know that there's some upcoming meetings, hopefully trying to address some of these issues. I know that there's a Bartlet Advisory Group that is formed, and the H3 Advisory Council meets next week. I participated today in a meeting to help set some priorities. It was a United Way meeting for the Emergency Food and Shelter Program funds that they received. Applications for that should be out now, and if not, definitely within the next 24 to 48 hours. And we will meet again in three weeks to go over applications for that. And we did set some priorities of like other shelter and rent, and then utility assistance, and then food assistance. So hopefully we can, we can look at some of that other shelter to help people who are already on the street, and some of the rental assistance to try to stop new, new people from, from ending up, try to stop it at the cause. But there's only, there's less than $40,000 to go around with this set of funding, and it always goes very fast. We all know that. I look forward to attending the Advancing Community Trails Workshop this week, with you, are you glad?
Yeah.
And Drew, and the partnership dinner also on Thursday with a lot of us. I hope everyone had a chance to go down and look at the cherry trees, seeing the weather that was coming through today. I made my husband drive me down and through the waterfront again yesterday. DC definitely has more, but ours are just as pretty, and, you know, go down and you get to see all sorts of people and talk to all sorts of people, and it's a great community space that everyone can use. So, yeah, I was happy to stop down there again before they were gone. Just two things upcoming this weekend. This Friday, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM downtown, is First Friday for the Arts. That's through the Arts Council. They're having a lot of different events at different places downtown. I'm not going to try to list them all, but a lot of businesses and galleries are hosting artists and musicians. So definitely look that up on either the Main Street page or the Arts Council Greater Morgantown's page and get the information about that. And also Saturday morning at 10:00 AM, Friends of Deckers Creek is doing their annual trail cleanup meet at the Outdoor Learning Park behind the Kroger in Saberton, and you can clean up trash with usually like 100 of your closest friends.
Oh, thank you. I'll just say again to the audience, thank you for your passion. It's recognized. It's frustrating. It's frustrating to sit in this seat and hear these complaints. I appreciate what you're saying. I wish we had this solution for them. We are doing considerably a number of things to address these issues. We were instrumental in causing the Hazel House of Hope to exist. We've been constantly supporting the various organizations. We've tried to pull various other churches, organizations, interested people together to cooperate. It is a very large problem for any single group. I wish I had the magic wand. I wish I won the lottery. I certainly devote that attention to it, my attention to that. We do things within the community to make this a community. The pocket park you heard about, that's one of them. I just got a notification that we're going to be looking at a particular curb, a sidewalk, a little thing, that we're hoping that we could convince the landlord to make more ADA accessible. We are aware of these problems. We do try to address them. There's not a person here on council that would not vote for something that would promote these activities, should we, could we? And we do. We have our limits. Come to us with positive suggestions. Participate. Help us out, and we'll be happy to listen to them. At least I will. See you in my report.
All right. Let me start by saying, nice shirt. And I will.
We have the same tail.
Yeah, that's gotta be it. And I do, I echo what everyone has said here. As somebody that works in the school system, I've worked with it firsthand with students that not only have house insecurity, but have food insecurity. I worked with the at-risk youth for about seven years before I moved on to Morgantown High School. And I've seen what it does in terms of emotional stress that it causes them and issues it brings into their household. And you're not being ignored. We do hear you, and I would love to hear any solution that can be presented. On a little bit of a lighter note, maybe we'll go for a transition instead. April 14th, we have the International Street Festival. Sister Cities will be there, setting up downtown. So make sure to go there, check out all the different food and stuff they're going to have out. Let's see. And that is, again, April 14th, so not this coming weekend, but the weekend after. I will also reiterate, because we had our Neighborhood Association meeting, June 8th is our planned neighborhood yard sale, and that was agreed upon with everyone. We'll have a QR code showcasing all the different homes where people can find all the different things they like to purchase. The Handmade Market, in that same vein, is April 27th, and the Tree Board had given out 100 trees last year to be planted, and hopefully we can break that record this year. I also want to express my excitement about the Ruby Amphitheater events that are coming this summer. I read it while teaching actually in class, when the.
I read it while teaching actually in class when the post came through and I threw my arms in the air and, in sheer excitement and squealed, uh, over the plain white tees and post-modern jukebox specifically. Also Diamond Rio and Sarah Evans are fantastic in concert. And then the last thing is a request for those, uh, that may be watching at home or here. It is warm out and a lot of people, I notice, uh, will know people are out walking their dogs. And I would please ask, please, keep your dog on a leash. A lot of people let their dogs off the leash and say, "My dog is friendly," but a friendly dog off a leash that approaches a skittish dog on a leash can lead to what could be an unavoidable issue. Remember that our parks, trails and sidewalks are all a shared space and please be cognizant of those that we are sharing our space with. And that is my report.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank everybody for speaking today and, um, we appreciate that. I don't have anything to report from our ward today.
Thank you. I also appreciate everyone coming. I know that you don't necessarily see what we do or don't do. Um, we don't know all of what you're doing either, so when you come and bother to come and tell us what your expectations are or what you do for your daily work and daily volunteer work, um, it's good for us to know. As has been mentioned earlier, um, and this is not, um, this is not to say, "Oh, we can't do anything," but, uh, very rarely do cities tackle this kind of an issue on our own. Generally, people help to come up with suggestions, um, best practices, uh, ways that we can work together. And so in that spirit, I think you've heard from every single person here that people are interested, have noticed that we don't have the beds from Bartlett House anymore, um, have noticed that people, um, have died in fires, um, and are, um, as I think providers are also, um, talking together more and figuring out how to collaborate more, figuring out perhaps better systems or ways that we can all, um, have intake with people and get them into that housing first type model earlier rather than later. So, whatever, um, we all come up with, we'll be sure and let you know and whatever you all come up with, please let us know. Uh, it's, uh, it's difficult and there's no one solution for everybody, because everybody's in a little bit of a different, different situation. So, whatever we can do to be as open and accommodating to the services that other people provide and the ways that they work and whatever we can do to help support the work that needs to be done, um, it's important. I know that Brian has received several phone calls from me the last couple of weeks, like about every two days. "Oh, what can you tell me about this?" So, um, it's not that we're not interested, it's that we don't always know all of the things that are going on and the possible solutions, not that we don't know some of the solutions. But I really appreciate the comments about, um, people being understanding of each other and people, um, imagining if you are in someone else's shoes, what it would feel like. I think that people don't know even the stories of the people who are up here and the things that we've lived through in our lifetimes and the things that, uh, you all have lived through in your lifetime. Some of you are forthcoming and we know, but that doesn't mean that everyone knows what everyone else is thinking. So, if we can give each other the benefit of the doubt and figure out ways that we can work together, um, I think we will all prosper and can better help our houseless, homeless people who need assistance, even if they have a house, um, in their, um, mental, mental illness or issues with sobriety or just issues of don't have anything in the pockets. So, um, appreciate everyone coming tonight and, um, it is hard to make those transitions, Joe. I wanted to mention the, um, Banff Film Festival, which is on Thursday night, which is at the Met Theater, which is an international mountain film festival originating in Banff, Canada. But they receive hundreds of submissions of short films, um, each year and then they, um, send them all around the world and one of the places they stop is here. So it's kind of cool.
Which Thursday?
This Thursday.
This Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
Well, most of us are at the Met Dinner.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yep. Anyway, it's amazing and it may be another, another year when, uh-
It's always well-attended anyway.
Pardon?
It's always well-attended.
It's always well-attended, yep. But it's, um, it's really, it's really interesting. So, anyway, that's what I have and, um, I think, I think we could entertain a motion to adjourn. Do you adjourn?
Second.
All right. We're done.
Thank you.